Jake.
Yeah.
You did answer my question as far as the decrease from option one to option two, because I was wondering, what do you get for 25,000 if you're asking for 50,000?
Right.
You did answer that, that some programs would not be implemented. Now, the questions I had, the question I, well, questions, is that in blue, when you see the reduction, and especially if it's asset preservation, as far as the pavement, mechanical, electrical, how do you prioritize that? If these schools need certain things, and I see that an option one is 12 million, then there's 10 million, 800, so what are you not doing that you really need to do?
Yeah, great question. So I'll walk you through it if I have. I have.
It was interesting to hear that, like, when we're looking at a, like, a potential three mil increase for all of your recommendations, that part of the reason that it's a three mil increase is because we have been reducing that mill levy over the past few years. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. In order to keep the overall tax assessment, our revenue coming in, as level as possible, that that's been going down. So that's what leads us back to a potential three mil increase. We'd actually be up where we would have been anyway. Also, interesting what I heard, most of the folks, I think, in there, and you can correct me if Dr. Benson was there too, when they heard this and saw that, most of the folks in that room, they would be all for a three mil increase. But at the same time, they were all saying, but I don't think it'll sell district-wide, which I found very interesting. Most of them were all for it, but they're like, I don't think you'll be able to sell it.
Right.
So that just tells me there's a lot of folks, that we have a lot of education to do, to let people know exactly what's going on, what this looks like, and what we're doing. So I guess we have our work cut out for us if we want all the recommendations, knowing that this is also a very scaled-down list from what you started with. Otherwise, we've got to make some really hard decisions, which we may have to do.
I think, too, the community survey that we'll do will help inform a lot of, are we on the right track, that it's a broader perspective of our community outside of those folks who may be going to town.
And I'd like to piggyback on what Clay said. Also, at the financial and operations meeting, I saw overwhelmingly that the advisory group really put the focus on caps and CTE. They do not want to lose that, and they said that that's important for our students. So they were really excited about that, and that's one thing they did not want to really touch.
Sorry, me again. So, you know, you spoke a little bit about technology, right? You've got our tech person here. You know, one-to-one is the direction we have gone, especially, you know, since COVID. Are you looking at maybe some opportunities with maybe our youngest friends to maybe alter that a little bit that might affect the
Jake, you did answer my question as far as the decrease from option one to option two. Because I was wondering, what do you get for 25,000 if you're asking for 50,000? You did answer that, that some programs would not be implemented. Now, the questions I had, the question I, well, questions is that in blue, when you see the reduction, and especially if it's asset preservation, as far as the pavement, mechanical, electrical, how do you prioritize that? If these schools need certain things, and I see that an option one is 12 million, then it's 10,800. So what are you not doing that you really need to do?
Yeah, great question. So I'll walk through what I have.
It was interesting to hear that, like when we're looking at like a potential three mil increase for all of your recommendations, that part of the reason that it's a three mil increase is because we have been reducing that mill levy over the past few years. Is that right? Okay. In order to keep the overall tax assessment, our revenue coming in, as level as possible, that that's been going down. So that's what leads us back to a potential three mil increase. Would actually be up where we would have been anyway. Also, interesting what I heard, most of the folks, I think, in there, and you can correct me if Dr. Benson was there too, when they heard this and saw that, most of the folks in that room, they would be all for a three mil increase. But at the same time, they were all saying, but I don't think it'll sell district wide, which I found very interesting. Most of them were all for it, but they're like, I don't think you'll be able to sell it. So that just tells me there's a lot of folks, that we have a lot of education to do, to let people know exactly what's going on, what this looks like, and what we're doing. So I guess we have our work cut out for us if we want all the recommendations, knowing that this is also a very scaled-down list from what you started with. Otherwise, we've got to make some really hard decisions, which we may have to do, so.
I think the community survey that we'll do will help inform a lot of, are we on the right track? That gets a broader perspective of our community outside of those folks who may go any time.
And I'd like to piggyback on what Clay said. Also, at the financial and operations meeting, I saw overwhelmingly that the advisory group really put the focus on caps and CTE. They do not want to lose that, and they said that that's important for our students. So they were really excited about that, and that's one thing they did not want to really touch.
Sorry, me again. So, you know, you spoke a little bit about technology, right? We've got our tech person here. You know, one-to-one is the direction we have gone, especially, you know, since COVID. Are you looking at maybe some opportunities with maybe our youngest friends to maybe alter that a little bit that might affect then the bottom line in some way?
Absolutely. So our secondary, our fusion of tech, I was going to say that secondary for six or nine grid.
Yeah.
Elementary devices that we have, mainly a five-year device. And they were replaced within the last, you know, 18 months. So those decisions for anything in elementary, or I think this next one, in terms of, I think, sort of reduction or changing the footprint of elementary looks like, is absolutely what we need to do.
Okay.
And that would impact any of those, this bond related decisions.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
And by my Dr. Evans, I'm sorry. We were at tables at the finance and operations committee, and I forgot Dr. Evans was there as well. So I should have referred to both Dr. Benson and Dr. Evans. It was a different configuration, so I, she was outside my view at that meeting, so sorry about that, Sonya.
No problem.
You know, I do think it's important to consider what the community has said about this. For years, we-
Patrick, I'm sorry, I can't hear a thing you're saying. There's no microphone, so you've got to really use your big, you know, big person voice.
Yeah, you might hear it or you might not. You know, it's important for us to listen to the community. Several bond issues have passed because there's been no increase. I think we need to continue on that path. There've been some bond refunds that have failed in larger parts of our community because they asked for so much. As a matter of fact, they asked for quite a bit in Mindock County, and they eventually came back and did a much smaller amount. You know, affordability is obviously one of the issues that we face in our district for parents and staff. And if we continue to increase the mill levy on our bonds, then that's going to impact affordability. So I think we need to decide which side of our mouth we're going to talk out of. But, you know, more specifically, you know, the asset preservation, I think, is important. While I think, you know, equity is an issue and weight programs are great, but it seems to me that we're an education institution, and if we've got classrooms that need to be built or upgrades that need to be made to our curriculum programs, then I think we need to focus on that.
I, so just to give my two cents here, if that's what we're doing. I think that I would love to see the high school classroom, science classroom renovations added back in. Seems like it could still get in there without the increasing by mills, because it's like a $5 million difference between the two. And, but I do think the safety improvements in the SWI Act definitely, that those windows have to go. But I think no mill increase is the only option we have right now.
I think we could put comment on the timeline around the same time in the spring, April 7th. We may or may not know details about school funding formula. It would be effective July 1st. So there may be some wisdom, there may be some risks, and that might be a rest to contemplate.
But we can adjust that timeline if we want to.
And so just to, just to reiterate, because some people listening may, if they can hear, I don't even know if anybody can hear out there. But if anybody is listening, can you, can you talk a little bit about why? You know, if we look at your wonderful graphics and stuff, there's a bit of a gap with the first year you show on there and the next couple. So we kind of went to a three-year bond. Can you talk a little bit about why we did that?
Yeah, so past bonds were a lot larger. Obviously, the latest one was a $533 million bond. And it was, over the course of eight years, we had a request, really from our community and from our board at the time, that we want to deliver projects on a timeline that our community, who are voting on this for their kids in the schools, would experience those projects. And so somebody who's in elementary school doesn't want to approve a project that takes eight years of their elementary kids to every business. So that pushed us to the three-year bond cycle. As we plan on the facility side, again, going back to asset preservation, we build out a three- to four-year bond cycle. We plan for three to four years' worth of asset preservation. We're not planning for eight. So, yeah, I mean, there's absolutely terms, right? We can have conversations around the exact timeline of the bond. We just have to understand that there are things that don't get done every year if you delay. And it's about a 6% inflation cost increase toward every project, almost every purchase, as we delay that each year. So it was a good thing.
Great, thank you.
And to add, go ahead.
So Jake, this is along the lines of the land acquisition. So we do projections out every year for five years or so. And there is, to my recollection, no reason to be considering building any new schools in the next five years. Is that correct?
Yeah, thanks. I actually missed bringing that up. So that's a great question. No new school in the recommended in this bond, hard rolling protections, as you mentioned. Overall, the district's steady or declining. We have ample occupancy and availability at our capacity, at our schools in the southern part of our district where all the growth is occurring. Give you an example, still elementary is at 67% capacity. It's actually down from 2016, '17. There were about 364 students, and it's now 244 students. We've obviously built elementaries on the west side of the district, so long answer to your question. But yeah, there, as I see it, and I, by my recommendation, there's no need for a new school, certainly not in the next three-year bonds.
So and to add on to the, Jody, your question about, we used to have a six- or seven-year bond cycle. One of the issues is the technology was changing sometimes, or the need would shift because of the demographics. And so the three-year cycle still makes sense. But more importantly is, is sometimes we would allocate bond money to do certain things, and now that either need wasn't there any longer. And so that left that money kind of free-floating, and, you know, it may have been more difficult to figure out what to do with it, right? And so, so that three-year cycle still makes a lot of sense. Again, I still think it needs to be no, no increase.
Yeah, the other thing that a three-year cycle does, I mean, I can't imagine if in 2020 we had planned for an eight-year bond cycle at the rate that construction costs were related. I mean, we've never seen anything like it. We would have missed the market and not delivered on several of those projects. Shorter bond cycles allow us to do better forecasting if we're able to deliver every project, same with 2023 bonds. Not that I expect a pandemic or anything that would impact the industry like that again.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that, and kind of Patrick, Patrick's comments too, what I heard of, sorry, that the importance of needing to remain agile in education, you know, can't be underestimated, so.
I do have a question about the, if we were to actually be statutorily funded under the special ed funding, would we have the option to be able to lower other mill levies, not the capital ones? But would we have the option to lower some of those mill levies to be able to bring up a capital mill levy up, so it would effectively be a wash? Would that be one of the options that were before us if we were actually fully funded under the SPED statute, special ed?
Got to line the years up.
So in a lot of ways, it's really critical that we actually get statutorily funded for special ed. Otherwise, we're handcuffed. Okay.
Anything else for Jake? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Staying on the topic of finance, we have a presentation on Blue Valley Recreation Center refunding certificates of participation. David Artiberi is here to explain that to us.
Do you want to discuss these young men here before they leave?
Oh, thank you, students.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Welcome, David.
Can David Artiberi speak with Nicholas? I'm here to talk a little bit about the REIT commissions outstanding certificates of participation. They don't issue bonds. REIT commissions don't have the statutory authority to issue bonds. It's the finance capital projects that issue certificates of participation. And they did that back in 2015 to fund the construction of the Hilltop Center. Those certificates have recently become callable. In other words, the commission can pay the dog mile without penalty. And if they want to, could refinance them who's possibly achieved some savings. So that's what we're here to look at doing. And I'm going to run through some numbers here, and I apologize. They don't present themselves well on this kind of display. Our software's quite used to set up for this kind of display. So the numbers are pretty small, but I'll try pointing out the important points, too. If you could turn to the first page here of this handout.
We didn't get the handout.
What?
What you see on this page, on the right-hand side is the remaining payments that you do on the 2015 COPs. You'll see there's a total, the blue box there shows a total of $10.8 billion, eight to five million dollars. The COPs, the final maturity of which is in 2035. And they have annual payment of a little over $1.3 million per year. And overall, the average interest rate on the COPs is $3.91%. What this does is it attempts to look at what a new COP issue, you would use to pay off the old COP issue, what this new issue would look like. And then it compares the new payments, the old payments, to look at what sort of savings are available. So in the middle there, you'll see the estimated debt service on the new issue. Total issue size, about $11.1 million. It's a little bit bigger because there's costs associated with refinancing. The total annual payments are approximately $1.275 million per year. The interest rate on the old COPs is about 3.91%. Of the new COPs, based on current rates, all in, taking into account the issuance costs, the effective borrowing cost is about 3.4%. So lowering the overall rate by about half a percentage point. That will create, then, if you look at the far right-hand column, savings each year of, you know, approximately $30,000. Now, these numbers were run a few weeks ago. Interest rates have come down a little bit since then. Right now, we're estimating the savings is probably closer to about $350,000. Again, it's spread out over that, you know, the remaining 10 years of the issue. So issues wouldn't be extended, it would be keep staying the same, hopefully, in a period. So that's sort of what the numbers look like. In terms of procedure rate, in order to issue refinancing COPs, it's a lot like when the original COPs were issued. The REIT commission will go out and get a rating for the COPs. It will be documented, and then we will go out and market the COPs to investors in return with the final results in hand. The school district, your obligation in this transaction is simply that you're required to approve any lease that the REIT commission would enter into. Including what would happen here is the REIT commission would be amending the existing lease on the facilities. You'd be asked then at your March meeting, before the COPs were being issued, you'd be asked to adopt a resolution that would give the board president the authority to sign an amended lease. And that authority would be contingent upon a certain minimum level of savings being achieved in refinancing. That minimum level of savings would be determined by the REIT commission at their March meeting. Welcome, any questions? God, I know I've kind of brushed through it here, but it's, you know, like I said, similar to the issuance process that we went through last year, and similar to the process that the school district goes through. But in this case, it's a new project we're talking about.
This may not be a bond question. Certainly in favor of saving that $350,000. But what's the REIT center going to do with that $350,000 roughly?
Probably to reduce the levy. Yeah, like you said, mentioned earlier, it's the $300,000, $350,000, but over about 10, 10 of the period. So I'd think the whole margin is to make sure that there's something that would be possible.
So it goes back to the taxpayers.
Other questions? Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Well, I always like to hear about saving money. We're going to have a policy introduction. Dr. Chapman?
Thank you. So we are going through all of our board policies. And right now, the Blue Valley policies are done a little bit differently than, there's a, the Kansas Association of School Boards is a part of a national group, and they have attorneys on staff that have reviewed and recommended policies for a school district board to adopt. And it's obviously one of the most, it's fundamental role and responsibility of the school board. The benefit of adopting the recommended policies from the Kansas Association of School Boards is there, they've already been vetted. The, the language works quite nicely, it's consistent. They are kept up to date with the state statute. So whenever there's a state statute change, or a new reference, or anything that happens, then they will send us a policy update, making it easier for us to ensure that we are in compliance with either state or federal law. And again, the board has the authority to accept, amend, or reject any of these policies. So what we're proposing is that we essentially notice the public that we are opening all policies for review. And they will be posted on our website, and they're actually already there. And they're posted underneath the Board of Education, and then there's a tab that says Policy Review. And then there are policies currently in review. And so right now, we have four sections posted, and we'll be adding all of them. So any member of the public can click on any of those policies, and they can see the red-lined version. So some of them, we've gone in and said, hey, we think we need to add this to make it comport to the manner in which we do things in Blue Valley. Some of these are not a ton of changes. They're relatively easy to review and say, yep, these work. So what we propose to do is all policies would go into effect in July upon your final approval. But in order to manage these in a way that also ensures that you've had the opportunity to review them, that the public has had the opportunity to review them, which is actually not a part of the state law, but something that I know this board has valued in the past. So we'll post everything on our website, and people can click on a link to provide feedback on those policies, and then we'll be reviewing them. So then, what we'll do in February is we'll provide a high-level summary of substantive changes that maybe you want to talk about. Things that are more than a slight semantic edit or something like that. So the real substantive ones that we're going to highlight, so that we can have a discussion at the board table. And then the board would vote on, for example, in February, we'll take a big chunk. There's about six or seven sections, because they're not substantive changes. So we'll, we'll tackle those. I'll provide a summary that says, you know, substantive changes are on these policies. Might want to have a conversation about them. So it will require us taking a look at things before the next board meeting, so that you're comfortable with it. We'll also review any feedbacks- We'll also review any feedbacks provided from the public. And then we'll have more of a discussion about it. If the board agrees to the edits, they actually won't go into effect until July. So if something pops up between now and, or February and July, and we've already talked about it, it's not a problem. We can come back in and take a look at it. It's also not a problem that down the road, so if we go through all these policies, and our goal is to have everything done for adoption in July, and August rolls around and we're working on, you know, something, and we go, oh, gosh, we should maybe take a look at that policy again. We can bring it back forward and make more edits to it as we get going. So it's never necessarily a closed version, but we're trying to accomplish quite a bit in this overall adoption. The benefit of going to the KESB recommended policies, they've been vetted by legal counsel. They've been tested. They are in alignment with the Kansas State Statute and the policies and procedures. And they're up to date. So, you know, it provides us with some consistency, and we know that they've been tested, if you will. So it's a pretty big task to go through all of them in such a fast manner. KESB, just as your first, as we're looking at these review, they've had these policies for about eight months. And they went through all of their recommended policies. And then they compared them to every single one of our policies. And so now what we're doing is going through and saying, okay, we need to make sure we retain this or maybe we don't need something. So that's what our goal will be. And February, you'll see a nice section. Go ahead.
I mean, if you're not finished, go ahead and finish.
Yeah, so I'm good.
So when you refer to February, you're...
I'm sorry, March.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you. This is February already, March.
So through it at the same time.
Yes, no. We're basically, what I'm letting you know right now is notice to the public, we're opening up all of them in March. We're going to take the six A through...
H.
H, essentially. And we'll go through those and summarize them in March for your consideration. And then they would go into effect in July.
So a couple more pieces. So is there going to be some sort of summary of two things? One is the public comments for the boards to take a look at. I don't know that we need to see all of them word for word, but we just need to get an idea, I think, of what the gist is of their comments are. 4,000 comments on Policy A.
Right.
And you might have two comments on Policy B. But, you know, the main point is we understand what their question or comment is, the nature of it. They may be all the same. And the same thing on the policies that are recommending to be deleted or added. Like, we don't have policies on A, B, or C. And so now we're going to have a big policy on A, B, or C. Or gee, we have something that's maybe more specific of an issue in Blue Valley. And maybe we don't need that policy anymore, which is fine. But I think we need to have at least some sort of briefing on, we're going, we don't need these for the following reason. So that we understand that, I mean, KSB may do a great job for the statutory purposes. But the question is, is do we have specific policies in Blue Valley that were passed for specific reasons unique to us?
Right. Yep. Yes, we will provide that high-level executive summary. And then we do have a number of policies that we have in Blue Valley that are important that maybe aren't even at all in part of the KSB. So we'll be adding those into the appropriate section. And so I'll be, we'll provide you an executive summary with both the community feedback as well as our recommended edits or deletions or additions.
I appreciate this conversation and really, you know, the opportunity to kind of streamline operations. There are so many interesting things that happened in Topeka. And keeping up with all of that is, can be incredibly difficult and pretty heavy lift sometimes. Things pop pretty quick. But having said that, though, to kind of Patrick's point, this is not a cookie cutter, you know, situation. We still have and will be using, you know, policies that are best for us, too, so.
A long overdue spring cleaning. Any other comments?
I mean, that's an aggressive schedule, but more power to you.
Yes, it is. It's, we're grateful that the work that KSB did because they took them about, gosh, like eight months to do their comparative work. So they really started the ball rolling for us. And then we have a lot of our various leaders of each department are collaborating together and going through them. And there may be some that we also take through our committees. It just depends. The really big ones are the instruction section, the personnel section, and the student section. Those are the three that will have the most substantive edits. And they'll be sort of on their own, separate from everything else. So we're starting with the easier ones and building up our ability to tackle some of the ones that are maybe garner more conversation.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. We've got one action item tonight that's approved the Apple Inc. contract. Kent Corsor, Director of Technology Operations, going to tell us a little bit about it. Welcome, Kent.
Take it up, space. The Apple iPad server is for our middle school and high school students that are taking digital arts, graphic design, and/or computer science. So in our middle schools, there will be 30 iPads for classrooms for the digital arts and computer science. At the high school level, it's the... So again, 30 devices per class are shared devices within those classroom spaces. It is, I just heard refresh of the existing iPads that they have that are end of their life. So we put those iPads in a little over five years ago. We talked about patterns of technology before on refresh cycles. This is just hit its refresh cycle. So we're not adding anything new, per se, as much as just updating the existing technology that's in those classrooms today to be shared amongst a variety of students and content areas.
Are iPads still the best technology for what we're doing in the classroom right now?
Those they are, especially with graphics on. They use their stylus, their Apple Pencil Pro. And different Adobe apps will create very specific to that technology that then can be exported into a variety of different formats. And still, I would consider it the standard of best practice. And that's what those teachers are asking for as well. Continuation of what they've already had. And the opportunity of changing that platform has been asked, is that still meeting their needs? And absolutely, they said yes, we want iPad Pro's in those same styles that we have, just the refresh laws.
So I get the familiarity argument. But is there other technology that's more relevant to what they're doing or needing to do or should be doing? I mean, in technology lifespan, 10 years is an awful long time. And I just don't believe for a second that 10 years is the same technology that we need to continue to do now. I'm here to listen, obviously. But is there anything new out there that we should be taking a look at instead? I guess is my real question. I mean, I get they're being creative, and it's a, some sort of drawing board or something that has a lot of functionality to do a variety of things. But, I mean, are these newer versions? Is there greater functionality on these iPads?
Yeah, so the iPad Pro in itself has dramatically changed in terms of its processing ability, storage, even pencil down to different textures that can adhere to different styles. Those are all so important to those folks that every iteration of the iPad's gotten progressively better with that. And that new processor, the new ones, will dramatically be much faster than the current ones. And we're drawing, we want to have, we don't want to lag. We want that to be very, very crisp. And on those new screens, it'll be so much better than what they have there. Again, from an iPad perspective, I would say that the iPad Pro specifically still has the best screen out there in tablet form. Think about our one-to-one devices. They're not touchscreen at a secondary level. And the Chromebook at the middle school level doesn't move that for that high-end of those.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Need a motion to approve the contract.
Yeah, I move the Board of Education approve the Apple Inc. contract with minor edits deemed necessary by legal counsel.
Second.
Moved by Dave, second by Jody. All in favor, raise our hand. Passes unanimously. Takes us to our closing items, which would be our board comments. Patrick, let's start with you.
I don't think I have any tonight.
No comment. Dr. Evans?
Yes, I just wanted to give kudos to Aubrey Van Middle School for their arcade. It was about the circulatory system, the digestive system. I mean, it was phenomenal. Those, it was outstanding. It blew my mind how these kids were so creative. And they created games for everything, and you won prizes. And Jan and I, too, ended up with a lot of Jolly Ranchers involved. So it was really fun, and I totally enjoyed that.
Thank you very much.
Just happy birthday to Clay.
Oh.
Thank you, Gina.
Twenty-nine today.
I can't hear you. You should say sixty-nine. I can't hear down here. Sorry.
I did not say that.
Nice.
Clay?
Sure, I want to thank Ms. Chapman for coming in and sharing her thoughts today about the elementary school changes. Those are very important, and we'll take those into consideration. Special shout-out to our award winners earlier in the meeting, especially Mrs. Ramstead. Good job. Excellence in education. And our West alumni, Sweethan Newcombe. If you haven't tried her restaurant, of course, over at Blue Hawk, shameless plug, is delicious. Other than that, you know, our country is not in normal times right now. But we will continue operating for the safety of our kids and the best, delivering the best education we can so these kids can reach their fullest and highest potential despite what goes on outside of our district or what might creep in. So that's always on our mind. The, and then I just have two questions. If we wanted to give any legislative update and if we needed any executive session to continue the discussion we had in our executive session before this meeting or if staff received enough input from us to go forward.
I don't think they received enough input.
I don't know what's, my impression of the meeting, I'm not sure staff received an answer from us. I could have been wrong, but I did not give an answer.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I think we do need additional executive session after the...
How many minutes?
Well, I can make a motion after we go through the other board comments, but...
Let me head here.
Thank you.
Had the opportunity to go through with Dr. Chapman and fellow board member Clay. Three elementary schools. As a former educator, I just want to call out our faculty and staff. I was very impressed with the educational activities that were going on, the use of the, I don't know if you still call it the whiteboard technology, but the applications and the instructional activities were outstanding. So thank you.
I would like to do a shout-out to our board clerk, Anna. It was Board Appreciation Day, recognized throughout the state of Kansas on January 28th. So we were very lucky to have her as well as Alicia, who supports Anna, too. So thank to both of you. Much appreciated. You keep us in line.
I'd also like to do a shout-out. As always, there are wonderful things going on in our community. Great theater and music programs. We were well represented at the Prairie Wind Festival in Lawrence this weekend. Went to that by students as well as some really wonderful staff who played. So that was really exciting. But I can tell you, I went to Little Mermaid at North Friday night. And it was an amazing production. But big shout-out to Ursula, who played Ursula. That kiddo knocked it out of the park. I mean, I can't even describe how amazing that performance was. It was absolutely fantastic. So yay to Ursula out there. So thank you.
And I had nothing else. Did you have something to add?
I was going to say, I got to see Grease and Willy Wonka and Little Mermaid. And it was unbelievable, the talent that's out there in our schools. And Ursula was played by the same student that sang "For Good" at the Fall Breakfast.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
They are absolutely fantastic.
It was amazing.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
So that was a lot of fun. And then the, for a legislative update, we could add that in March. And I could have our lobbyist add something in March. The session, I can just add, just briefly, the session's moving very quickly. And I was there in Topeka for a short while today. I can't necessarily think it was all that productive. However, our delegation is doing good work, and they appreciate hearing from people. And so the feedback that we've received, the Johnson County school districts coming together and really focusing on the special education funding is critical. And really, the reality is special education is fully funded because the school districts are fully funding it. It's the gap in the funding that we have to pull to cover that. That's really, that's resonating with our representatives. So we just need to, it's appreciative that our community is reaching out and making comment. And we need to keep that pressure on because there is a solution. So.
Great. Thank you.
Excuse me. It's hard to hear. Are you planning to go into executive session now? Or please, we need to have another, we'll have to call another special meeting to do that because it's not on our agenda tonight. We've already approved the agenda, and there's no executive session at the end of this meeting. What we can do...
Kent, go ahead.
Would like to have another executive session if we can call a special meeting to do that.
Can we move to amend the agenda to add a special?
We just need to adjourn this one and call another one.
What's that?
We just need to adjourn this one and call another one.
Can we do that tonight?
No, we need to notice that.
Notice it, wouldn't we?
Notify.
I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to work with Anna to get that done. Sorry to be the, you'll follow.
That's what you're here for. We'll do it again.
That it, then?
Did...
Okay.
Hold on. Did we officially adjourn our special meeting?
That one? Yeah, we had to.
We came out here and adjourned it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
I thought maybe we, we had an opening.
You are an attorney. Can I adjourn this one yet? Okay, we stand adjourned for this. And then I guess we'll have to call a special meeting at some point.
We'll work on that, and I'll contact you.
Thank you. Come on, Moose. See you next week.
See you next week.